All right, we can get started tonight. Thanks, everybody for being here. Ben is out of town. And so I'm chairing the meeting. We just have two agenda items tonight. And Public Works is going to be taking the lead on them. I'm guessing that's Kevin and Scott. And it sounds like we might have some folks who want to give some comments or something too. So we'll get to those for the different agenda items. Yes, you guys can kick it off.
Perfect. Another stimulating evening of Public Works discussions. The first item on the agenda is kind of a discussion about how we currently do our utility accounts as it relates to a landlord-tenant relationship. And, you know, our, our staff has indicated that this is really starting to put some pressure on their time. So we wanted to take the board's temperature of, you know, are you open to potentially changing that? Are you locked into what we're doing now? And I don't think there's any right or wrong answer from your guys' perspective, but just, just trying to see what we can do from an efficiency standpoint without completely unraveling a system. You know, I'll probably say some fairly controversial things during this. And may as well start it out with, you know, really, I don't, we're acting like bookkeepers for landlords right now. And I don't know that that's the role of the town to be involved in, you know, private agreements between two parties. You know, I, I think that's really what this boils down to. You can see from that chart on the first page of the memo, you know, we've had, I gotta put my glasses on, 532 authorization forms processed in the last five years. And that doesn't mean that we've added that many tenants. What it means is the, our staff has had to work through those things. Some of them are probably still on because they're multi-year tenants and some of them probably dropped off. But that's kind of the level we're looking at. You know, obviously, it looks like there was probably a little bit of a bump for COVID in that chart. And it did come down, but we're still in the 75 range for each year. The other thing we threw in there, I was anticipating one of the questions being, what does everybody else do? So that's the first chart under the discussion. And freely admitting, you know, we would be deviating from what most of the other communities in the valley do at this point in time, but I'm not sure that that's always a bad thing. More in line with, with what water and sanitation districts do that are outside of town control, if you will. Let's see. You know, we kind of tried to lay out, you know, what could be the benefits from doing this. And, and I do think one of the big ones is just getting us out of that in-between role in a private contract that we have nothing to say about. And, you know, we, we do tend, I think, to get some differing information, whether we're talking to a landlord of, you know, okay, this is how my lease is set up. They're supposed to pay half the bill no matter what, or prorate it for us. And, you know, there's some accuracy things involved in prorating. It's not that we try to make mistakes, but, you know, the difference between dividing by 30, 31, 28, or 29 does make a difference. I would hope we would know it was February, but the rest of the, you know, and the fact that our utility billing is in arrears. So I, I think I gave the example in here, the bill you hit in June is actually for water that was used between the middle of April and the middle of May. So that makes it a little more difficult as well. So, you know, by switching where the landlord is the one that we deal with, you know, I, I do think it would increase accuracy because it would be on them to come up with the accurate answer pertaining to their lease agreement. There, there is a, a privacy piece to this too, when, and freely, they are allowing it, so it's not on us, but, you know, the, the tenants have access to certain account information that still is in the landlord's name. I do think there's less risk. You know, the thing that kind of put this over the top for me was the example that I gave in here where we had 114-page trail of emails just in one exchange trying to sort out how to close out an account for a tenant. And that, that's just the email portion. It's not the how many phone calls were made to different staff members. So anyway, I, I could go on, but John L. and Christina are here. If you guys have any specific questions or want, you know, to hear some of the stories that they've experienced, or if not, let's just chat about it.
Great, thanks. Anybody have any questions or want to hear more from staff? Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Couple thoughts. One, definitely empathetic to staff concerns and time. I think the biggest question I had reading through that was, is, is there something that we aren't doing that the other municipalities are doing that's making our life more challenging? And I know that there were some, there were some variations on how those other municipalities dealt with it, but and I'm somewhat, somewhat reluctant to, to take back a service that we've kind of offered. At the same time, all those are really compelling, compelling arguments. I wonder whether there's a way that we can be less involved to some extent and just, just say, hey, we're only going to deal with, like, we'll send the bill to the tenant, but we'll only deal with the owner or, or something like that. I'm, I'm curious whether there's an existing framework out there. And then my, my sort of the tangential question there was, does our new metering system create any sort of a different path to make this easier? Or the imminent arrival of a new metering system? Because I know we're paying significantly for that. There we go.
So, you know, I, I think once fully implemented, the new metering system, I'm going to kind of work backwards on this, probably would make things slightly easier when it comes to, like, picking a final number for a, a read. We may not have to actually send somebody out to the house. We might be able to do it online. So that may make determining what the number is on the day tenants move out or whatever slightly easier. It doesn't change the prorating part of it because that's all done afterwards. As far as are there things that other communities are doing? I would guess most of the communities are doing similar things and you guys feel free to jump in because we all tend to use the same accounting software. So it's probably a very similar process. You know, I pointed out, I think Aspen has an automated thing. I don't know if it's worth going to that expense to do it. I, I think, you know, one potential, I don't know, policy compromise we could make is if we want to continue to allow tenants' access to the accounts, but adopt the policy that we are only dealing, when we're talking about bills and payments and whatnot, we're only dealing with the landlord, that might alleviate some of this. You know, and just get it out there. Hey, you can have access to the account, but when it comes to the landlord is responsible for the bill, we're not prorating things for you, but you can look at the info. I mean, I don't know if that can be done or not.
Prorating thing a little bit?
What's that?
Can you unpack the prorating thing a little bit?
So it, typically, there's kind of, I, I'd say like, if you think about it, like when property changes hands, you know, the title company calls us and says, I need a final read for the old person who owned the property so a new person can start paying on it. Very similar situation. You know, I, there's, I don't know how many different kinds of leases in town. And I don't think they all end on the last day of the month. Some of them might end in the middle of the month. Some may end in the 10th or, or whatever. And so if you think about when they call us to prorate, if prorate, if they just moved out, let's, let's pick, say that in my example where I said June's bill is for mid-April to mid-May. If they move out at the end of May, a true proration would be how much have they used from that middle of May to the end? How many days was that? But you don't know what the total bill's going to be until July. So it, it, it really, it kind of puts us into this speculative position potentially of, well, you either need to call back in July when we know what the bill is, or you can work it out with your landlord. So I, does that answer your question?
Yeah. It looked like one of you was going to maybe chime in on answering, partly answering Ross's question too.
Kevin answered it perfectly.
Yeah. So I mean, I, I think if, if the desire of the board is not to completely deviate from allowing tenants' access so that they can manage their relationship with their landlord, but being comfortable with us saying, look, we're not prorating bills. You need to work with your landlord on that. We're not talking about who pays the bills. Your landlord is responsible for, to us for paying the bill. We, we would accept, anybody walks in here and gives us a check and says it's for this address or this account, we're, we'll accept the money. It's not saying it has to come from the landlord, but if the tenant and the landlord don't pay, we'll be reaching out to the landlord.
I, I have a question. Um, you know, being a tenant, being an owner, being a renter, like in my past experience, I, 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 like, this number of authorized forms, 532, I'm, I'm shocked that we, we deal with the tenant. Like, I'm thinking we should deal with the property owner, or I know there's a lot of, you know, there's rentals or like a property manager. Are all these, because I'm assuming these are just, are, would it help if we just give access to like the property owner and a property manager and not tenants?
Yeah. So if you, I, I don't know if you saw that proposed authorization form, that actually takes away the tenant being able to access account, but it does give the owner of the property the ability to have a property manager that then can take care of those kinds of.
I did see that, but like how compared to the 532, because there's still going to be, I wonder how many, because you'll still deal with the property manager. I mean, I wonder if that'll decrease? Because you'll still have the same issues. Because property managers, sometimes one property manager is probably worse than like 50 tenants. You know what I mean? So I'm, I'm just saying, I don't know if that, I, I wonder what, I wonder if that would really help.
Go ahead, Jess.
It seems like if it's a property manager, then there's, the town is not acting like the middle man with these lease disputes.
Yeah.
Where, like, I've rented before and I don't think I've ever had the ability to like go into any sort of portal for electrical. The only thing I've ever had access to is cable because I had to set that up in my name through Comcast. It was not, it was like outside the landlord. So it seems like the easiest thing to do is to just do what they're recommending. And if someone wants to walk in with a check to pay the utility bill and it matches what you have, then that seems like completely reasonable to me. Like a tenant can call their landlord and say like, what's my bill this month? And the landlord can say, it's this much, and they can walk in and pay the bill. If they don't have to pay the landlord, this just seems like not rocket science to me and to just make it easier and pull us out of the middle as the town.
And the check doesn't have to come from the landlord. It could be from anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah. You don't care who the check is from, as long as it clears the bank.
It just has to be.
I'm with Jess. I think just follow their recommendation.
Yeah, seems really straightforward to me.
Seeing lots of nodding.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say yes, the fact that everybody else does, you know, does offer that service, just, I, I just have a little, a small bit of, I mean, I'm completely empathetic. I really am. I, I, I just, I'm somewhat reluctant to, to take away a convenience that we've offered to a fair number of people in town. And I don't, I don't have any skin in the game. But I, I wonder, I, I'm just wondering whether, whether if we would just say, just put a hard line on, on no, we're not prorating anything and we're not going to allow, we're not going to get involved in disputes. We will, we will speak with the tenant. And whether, whether that, I mean, is you, do you guys think that that would change? That would eliminate a lot of things if you, if the prorating wasn't an option? And and you just had to speak to the owner or, or not?
I can maybe offer a little clarity.
Yeah.
One of the opportunities here is for clarity, rather than speaking to the current tenant that's moving out and explaining their responsibility of the bill. And then explaining it to the property manager or the owner as well, so that they can keep track of giving a security deposit back, you know, in a month when that bill is ready. And then also communicating with the upcoming tenant that like to move into that property, rather than managing all three relationships. We're only communicating the expectations around the billing dates
Right.
to the property manager or the owner. Also important to note that the service is still accessible to all customers. Whether their name is on the account or not, they still, if they come in and pay a bill, they still have access on their receipt to the account number and the information required to set up an online account where they can personally go in and pay the bill if they're the tenant. They still have access to our online system as well as in-person payments. So there is no service that's going away. It's just streamlining communication from the town to the property owner and allowing the tenants to manage their questions about what they owe directly to the owner.
Yeah.
Because all that information is available to them. So if they want to figure it out themselves, they don't need to talk to the owner. The, the information is available online.
Okay.
That, perfect. Because I had that same question. I was like, I just want to make sure tenants could still pay online.
Yes.
Just because I don't walk a check anywhere. To make sure, I was like.
Yeah, I could get to, I can get, I mean, if, if the tenant, tenants can still, can be given that from the, the owner under the current proposal, right? Like on the, on the, under the full, full proposal of like, get out of the business of dealing with tenants. They could still, there's an easy workaround for the owner. I'm fine. Yeah.
So, does this affect trash? Is this?
It's all one invoice?
So we're talking about utilities.
Yes.
We're not just talking about water. We're talking about all the things you pay in express bill pay. We would be doing this.
Water, base water, trash.
Water, sewer and trash. Okay.
It's one account and one access point. Yes.
I also think it's, I don't, I don't think we should do it, we should keep it the way it is just because other towns haven't realized what a not great concept it is.
Your counterparts in other towns are going to be like, wait, how did you convince them? We're leading the way.
And I, I think one thing to point out is, I, I, this isn't going to be a like hard stop tomorrow. We'll roll it out so that landlords and, and tenants both aren't, like, if they already have an arrangement with us, carry it out till the end. But we're still not going to prorate things for you, but you can do the, you know, the access piece of it. But I think just the education of the property management companies and the owners, I, I think can make this relatively smooth, much smoother than everything's effective July 16th. Too bad.
Sounds great to me.
Yeah, it seems, seems reasonable.
Yes. And then you guys can do other things with your time. Yeah. Well, thanks for raising this and yeah, finding ways to be more efficient. It sounds like everybody's in, I thought everybody was in agreement. We don't have to vote. We're not voting tonight, but it's nothing to vote on, but okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sounds like.
Yeah. All right. The next item is out-of-town water and sewer tap moratorium.
This is the dredging up the past piece.
You can see there's lots of people interested.
Yeah, yeah. The reason we wanted to talk about this just in general is we continue to get more and more requests at a staff level for out-of-town services for a variety of reasons. And, you know, we, since, since I've been here and obviously before I've been here, we've been very strict on, no, there's no out-of-town water sewer taps, absent some sort of additional agreement, which we do have. To the contrary. The, the increase in pressure, I do believe at some point in time is going to raise itself to the level where one of you or all of you get approached by somebody that's been told no by staff. So this is more of a check-in just to make sure we're consistent with where the board is right now. And, and kind of go through, like, the history of why we have these out-of-town water tap moratoriums, you know, I, kudos to Scott. I've always been focused on the 93 ordinance that instituted that first moratorium that we're aware of. But Scott found the information that I referred to in the first part of the background of, you know, a letter from 1973 from our town attorney saying the board's not interested in doing out-of-town taps. So we're, we're talking about 50 years of, of history right now. And you know, one of the first silly things I did was in my first question, you know, why do we even have out-of-town taps? Part of that is, I'm not going to read the memo to you. Part of it simply, we have agreements. Y'all know that the main water line from town comes from Nettle Creek. That pipeline had to go through a lot of properties and back in the day, it was probably more financially advantageous, or at least seemed so, to trade a tap for an easement than it would have been to actually pay cash for it. So, I mean, that, that just makes sense of why we have taps on the Nettle Creek line. Because it had to cross a lot of private property to get into town. From a sewer perspective, you know, I, I don't know how many of you know, and I'm not talking down, but we haven't been in the sewer business since we've been a town. That, that started actually in our town's history fairly recently when we took over the sanitation district. And, you know, when you, when you dissolve a sanitation district and take on its assets and responsibilities, you get everybody that's hooked into the line and you can't just tell them, sorry, you're not in town, so we're not going to do that anymore. So there are reasons why we have these out-of-town taps. You know, the other thing is, how do we even know? And I would be probably leading down a primrose pass, path if I said, we know everything that's ever happened on our sewer lines outside of town, sewer and/or water lines outside of town, because the main reason we find out about this is because somebody pulls a building permit in either Picken County or Garfield County, and then they contact us and go, hey, are you going to serve them with water for this? But I'm sure there's people that do things without a permit, just like there are in town that we're unaware of. But that's how we typically find out is one of the counties, and I, I think I mentioned it in here, it's called a will-serv letter. Most of them want a letter from the town. If these people are saying, we're going to be provided water by the town of Carbondale, they want a letter from us at the county saying that we agree to that.
So the, the ones that were unpermitted, are you saying those are like people who illegally tapped into the system just on their own? Or how did?
I, I would say not necessarily tapped into the system. That's kind of one of the distinctions I've, I've made in this. I would say expanded their usage without having
So they have an extra unit or something, but it's not, so it's a, tap is as much an accounting term as a, as a physical term?
Right. I mean, we have five-eighths inch taps, three-quarter inch taps, one-inch taps. You can get a lot, a lot more water out of one of those taps holes in our main than most people think. You know, so if you don't tell the county you're adding three bedrooms or an ADU or something in the county and you just go do it, there's a chance that the existing service line would actually be able to supply that amount of water. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, totally.
And that's kind of brings us to one of the things that I wanted to talk about because while the moratoriums you can see in the language do talk about no additional taps, I think it's pretty important to, what was the intent of that? And I was kind of a smart aleck when I said, it wasn't to limit the number of holes in our pipes. It was to limit the amount of water that was leaving our system. I, I still believe that, but if that's not what everybody's on the same page on, we should talk about that.
I think there's a, probably a corollary benefit also of, you know, I know, we've sort of had a policy of trying to encourage development in town and not sprawl out. So, I mean, in certain sense, that's a both management program as well, a little bit.
Yeah. And that, that's one of the things that I, I think I mentioned in here in researching this and looking through a lot of past minutes. There's been at least two town managers have pointed that specifically out. And I could tell you if our town attorney was sitting here, he would point it out as well. It is, it's one of the biggest leverage things that we have to impact growth.
Are, are there, are there folks on the periphery with the current access to water who are, I mean theoretically, that are planning on major additions or renovations and counting on that? And, 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 I mean, I, I'm all for sort of drawing a line, but I want to make sure that we're, I guess legally not in a position to have to fight that. And if, if, if there was an assumption being made that the, because they had already had their tap, you know, are we going to have to fight the, the meaning of the word tap in court? Because they're just, they're not adding a new tap. They're expanding the use of that tap. Or is, is, are those the types of things that we need to worry about? Or does this clarify, if, you know, would, would, would a statement by us clarify that? And not be an issue?
You know, with, I think there's a small risk, but we're the ones supplying the water. So I think we can say, you know, the, the, the use of the word tap versus volume of water. I'm sure somebody has deep enough pockets, they could choose to do that. And maybe if at the end of this conversation, we're all on the same page, if that's the intent. And maybe if at the end of this conversation, we're all on the same page, if that's the intent. You know, maybe it's time to reaffirm that moratorium and clarify that language. You know, through. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to say you're wrong.
The folks who are asking what kind of, like, is it? Far away or are they right on the periphery? Is it an addition? Like, I'm just curious who's, who's reaching out.
All right.
Is it Satank? Is it more people in Satank? I do love Satank, so.
No, like with respect to Satank and CRMS, which we may be, that's, we're talking again about that whole master agreement. That many of you may not have even been aware. We've been trying to work on, we're working on that again. We have an agreement with this tank. Water association that says what the maximum number of EQR's is for their water system. So. I, from that perspective, that's a pretty easy answer.
Okay.
Um, same thing generally with CRMS. Go ahead.
I would say the, the biggest push that we're seeing right now is everybody south of the high school. There's many properties that I think have started to move. Um, and there's, there's some pretty. Strong encouragement for us to provide them water, um, for different reasons. Uh, I think there's several ADUs that have been, uh, approached to, to us or. Uh, brought to our attention that they wanted to build somebody that was actually preparing to do a fully separate tap. Um, that we caught that currently is under construction in that area. Uh, I believe that they have, they backed up and installed a well. So I think that's handled. Um, but there's a lot of development and that's. I think we've probably seen six to eight separate properties that have requested additional expansion of use.
Is that kind of the neighborhood between the high school and Prince Creek?
Correct.
Okay. And are those folks who are receiving water, but now they want additional taps? Cause we have, our Nettle Creek comes through there.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, and if it's not additional taps, it's, uh, maybe a larger tap, but you know, they're, they're due for replacement. There's a lot of galvanized lines over there. So they're like, oh, we're replacing it. And we're going to build this apartment behind your house or whatever it might be. Um, so there's a lot of expansion desired in that area.
Is that, so then wouldn't it be a better conversation to have about annexation before we? Like, cause they're right on the border. Wouldn't, wouldn't we want to hold on to that bargaining tool before we just say? If you're on our line already, we'll allow for expansion. It seems like. We should just stick with the policy we have unless we have annexation negotiations. And then at that point, we would consider. Changing because then they're in town.
Is that first neighborhood like an HOA thing? Would it have to, would like individual property owners would have to apply for. Patchwork annexation essentially in that, in that year scenario? Or would the whole neighborhood have to get together and decide they're going to annex? I don't believe any of that's an HOA. I think those are all individual properties.
Yeah, I think it's just.
But somebody who was not actually. Adjacent to town, but adjacent to the line, I guess they could, they wouldn't have as good of a case, I guess, to annex, right? Maybe.
That, that's correct. There's, you know, you, the way I would look at it is there's that one neighborhood directly adjacent to the high school with some bigger lots. They could potentially, I would guess, choose, and I'm not an annexation expert, but I know enough to be dangerous. They could potentially choose to like come to the town and say, we want to annex the entire development into town. They probably, I, I mean, basically the. Nuts and bolts are you have to have one sixth of the property boundary of what is being proposed to be annexed has to be contiguous to the current town boundary. And if it meets that criteria. Then we could have those discussions. And I think regardless of whether it was. No, if it was the entire HOA, I think it probably would still meet that with the entire boundary. Being up against the high school property on the north side. If it was individual properties, it would probably have to be the ones adjacent to it. And then. Next one's over and the next one's over. But I wouldn't spend a ton of time, I shouldn't say that. That's where some of the pressure's coming from now, but we have had pressure. All the way up to the KOA campground for expansions and, you know, even additional houses and things like that. So, you know, those would be the. There's no way we can annex you.
Right.
And we don't supply sewer to any of those properties or do they all have septic or what do they do?
The ones up that way would all be septic.
So they're on septic. And now you've said, there's already been a property owner who's gone the well route. So in some ways it would be unfair to them to suddenly change the rules and let everybody else get on a tap. If they've gone through the expense of building a well.
And, and ju- just, I've heard this a couple of times. I just want to make sure. Nobody is proposing that we start allowing these things to happen. That you're right from a perceived fairness perspective, but that, that's not what we're coming here and asking to do. We're asking to stay the course and are you guys comfortable with that? Most of our, just for perspective, most of the out of town sewer exists. In the CRMS area.
And not Satank?
Actually, there used to be a, a line that ran through Satank, but that's been abandoned.
So they're all.
There used to be a sewer line that ran through the Satank. Interesting.
They're all on septic now. Okay.
The state of that sewer line is probably the fact you'd have to dig it up and rebuild it at this.
It, it was actually abandoned years ago. It, I, I'm just, historically, there used to be a line that went. Like down toward the river and then back toward the wastewater plant, but that hasn't been active for years.
So they, did they like exempt themselves from it at some point then? Or how did that get abandoned?
I, I do not know.
Cause that does seem to me like one place where, I mean, I would assume the density of septic systems that neighborhood is. Could at some point be a water quality issue. I don't know how porous the subsurface is, but if every single one of those houses is putting. Their poop into the ground.
Um, the other, the other service we provide in that general area is sewer to the. Mountain Valley Mobile Home Park. Which is outside of town.
But not water.
Correct.
They have their own well, right?
Interesting.
So I, 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 I think stay the court, I mean, I, I'm certainly in favor of staying the course. I think maybe clarifying the course. I mean, it seems a bit of a red flag to have people replacing and potentially sort of upgrading, but not labor, you know. It's, is it a new tap? Is it a replacement tap? Somehow having, I, I think maybe discussing a, a statement or, or. Code of some sort that makes clear that beforehand, you know, before we get challenged on, on the meaning of a tap. Um, if, if it seems like that would be prudent.
Kind of reaffirming.
Re, yeah.
History, but clarifying.
Mark's.
Yeah.
Take on it, like, is it worth doing that? Or should we just stick with precedent and what we've been doing for thirty to fifty years? Sometimes opening that can of worms is more dangerous. So I don't know. I'd like to know what Mark has on that. I know we're not going to do anything tonight, so.
Right. No, that's a good, good point.
Oh, and, and maybe, maybe the answer to that piece of it. Might be that if we end up at the end of this conversation where we're on the stay the course. I can have that conversation with Mark and if he thinks it's the wise thing to do to update it and whatnot. It will bring it back to you. If he says, leave it alone, then we probably won't talk about it again.
It's one of those things.
It makes sense. Yeah, that's.
How many folks are on our Nettle Creek line that we're providing water to?
I believe it's forty-five or forty-six.
It's a decent number. It's right.
And that's, that would be basically south of Prince Creek, forty-five or forty-six. And so then there's another. Fifteen or so between the high school and.
And Prince Creek. Oh, okay. So like sixteen.
And that fifteen is kind of where the pressure's coming from and where you might, this is kind of where, where this instigated was. Some of this pressure's been repeated and so you might be approached.
You guys are predicting that we might receive an email from somebody.
Well, it's just one of those things where, you know, one or two questions a year.
Yeah.
And we're over that now and somebody's just going to not like what we have to say. And that's the next. You guys are in the business. You know what happens after that. Um, I would point out that, you know, we did, we, we've talked a lot about what's on the Nettle Creek and Satank and whatnot, but there are still some properties. Surrounded by town that are in the county as well, that we've been asked over time, hey, will you? Do this and, you know, in those. Or ones directly adjacent to town, we do say. You know, no, we're not going to give you an out of town tap, but you're welcome to pursue the annexation process.
Yeah.
Um, and, and that's there again to get it back into the court of, you know. Historically, annexations. Are supposed to bring value to the community that. Is annexing them and providing the services to them. So that's where, you know, bringing it back to you guys to have those negotiations on. Okay. You want to be a part of town. This is what it means to us. Yeah. And I, I think there's a, probably an understated in this memo piece of. It's a huge tool for us to control how this town grows and evolves and the areas outside of it.
Yeah, for sure.
And the, so the CRMS case is that you said you've been pursuing sort of a big agreement with them. Um, is that like, does that's not hundred percent resolved or?
So, uh, nuts and bolts, it, it's really. A topic for its own conversation and we'll probably have that soon, I hope. I'm, don't quote me on this, but I'm going to say back in the late eighties, early nineties, CRMS did a campus master plan. And at that time, the town manager wrote them a letter and said. We're committed to providing you sewer and water. For this master plan. Really kind of sat there and. Percolated for a while. You know, then we started having some desires to expand buildings or build houses out there or whatever, consistent with the master plan. And we, right after I got here. Um, we dove into it really hard and actually from a staff perspective, we've agreed on the. Number of EQR's that were included in that original master plan. We've agreed on how many you have now. So you get that delta of kind of. What did we commit to? Provide in the future. The sticking point even before I got here, right before I got here in two thousand sixteen. Um, they came to the town and said, we want to do this and. The town's like. Okay, but we want water rights. And. There's been this kind of circular discussion ever since about putting this master agreement. So everybody knows what's. What's going to happen there and what we're committed to doing. But the water rights piece of it has kind of broken down the negotiation because the contention. Was back when. The letter was written and said they had to pay the tap fees. It didn't say water rights dedication fees. Didn't say water rights dedication fees because at that time we didn't have a water rights dedication ordinance. So why would we have put something that didn't exist in the letter? So that's it, but we're getting close.
But in this case, we are getting water rights from them, right?
Correct.
So that would be. They wouldn't be paying us a fee to give us water rights, would they?
No.
They'd be paying.
But.
We have those in hand. We're part of the Rockford Ditch Association, right? Essentially now.
So. I'm going to bring it back out to the town. So. When we implemented the water rights dedication ordinance. It was not specific to CRMS or anywhere. It was in town. If you're going to do a development. You need to either give us water rights. On like real water rights out of the Crystal River. Potentially the Roaring Fork, if you were down that way. Or pay a fee in lieu of. And that's just so that as our demand grows, we have the portfolio in either water rights or money. To pursue additional water rights that the town can use to make them, to provide that service. Historically, and the way the code's even written on this is. If you have water rights associated with the land you're trying to build on, we want the water rights. You can't just pay a fee in lieu and keep your water rights. We want those in the town. So thinking of it specifically in that context. The Rockford Ditch is the water rights that run through CRMS. Which we've had the discussion. Those are the senior water rights on the Crystal River pre-compact. And it, it's okay. If you're going to increase the demand on our system, then offset that with our ability to meet that demand with senior water rights.
And so you're still trying to get to the, to get those water rights then, or we have got.
Historically, we've done it project by project. What this agreement is intended to do. Is get this out of a debate with the board every time they want to do some sort of expansion that's consistent with their master plan and go. Okay, here's the playbook. You know, cause that, that's what it has been up to this point is each individual project is. You know, in two thousand sixteen, they came to the board. Recently, we were able, it, it was a negotiation, but. The recent projects like. Either give us the water rights. Or come have a discussion with the board and they chose in that case to just give us the water rights. But there's no reason, if we can all agree on, you know, what's the intent and what's the master plan of how we're going to handle this. It, it would take some contention out of it. But the contention is not negative contention. It's just both entities doing what they can to preserve their entity. So it's not a hostile thing. It's just, it takes a lot of negotiation.
The Rockford is not covered by that special convertibility. Uh, clause or whatever that we got in the early nineties, that only applies to the town ditch and the. Um, Weaver. Is that true or does?
Are you talking about that eighty-eight change case?
Yeah, like there was a right that we can, we could convert ditch water to. Treated water if we needed to.
And the shares that we had at that time in the Rockford Ditch were part of that.
But, oh, so they are part of it. Okay.
The ones we had at the time.
Okay, but the new ones not.
The new ones would have to be part of a new change case. But considering the seniority. On the river. We'd be in a pretty good position. So, but. Sorry to deviate.
No, that was my fault. I just.
I'll get to, we're knowledgeable.
So, I don't know.
All right. So it sounds like we're all. In support and understand continued moratorium, stay the course. And you'll just check with Mark and see if we should kind of re-solidify that or. Rely on precedent.
Leave it alone.
Yeah, and the, I, if you guys are comfortable with that, if you see it again, that'll be because Mark said you should see it again. And if not.
No, that sounds great.
Right.
Um, Ali, I just want to make sure, is there anybody online who's been wanting to, okay. No landlords, no tenants, no, no. None of the sixty tap holders on Nettle Creek getting our precious Nettle Creek water.
It's the quality of the memo.
Yep. All the details are there.
Everybody read the memo, I'm sure.
Before. Before you adjourn, just because it's kind of tangentially related, um. Good news, the PRV. Is repaired and we're bringing that back up to full speed. So we'll probably.
Didn't even let me say it.
Scott, do you have anything you want to add?
All I ever come here is bad news.
Good news can turn into bad news, so I'll take.
Give me, give me time. Yeah, we'll, we'll come up with something.
We're working um through that. We'll be bringing it back up to kind of where we were before it failed tomorrow. Correct? And then our plan is to kind of let that ride for about a week and make sure everything's functioning. Once that. Is there, we'll probably do a new press release about the water conservation, still encouraging people to do what they can, but uh. You know, kind of go back to your use, but being mindful of that use.
Have you seen a reduction in use?
Yeah, um, slight.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, instead of being over one point five million gallons per day, we're a little under. We're tracking like one point four, one point four five.
Okay.
So slight reduction. We've been able to stay on top of it. So everything's been, that's been good.
Great.
But it got us into that target zone of being up at one point six, six or so. Kind of back down where it was manageable with a little bit of break to the crystal well and the Roaring Fork well. So that was good.
As long as those treatment plants were actually shutting off each day, we're in good shape. I have wanted a little bit of good news. Our driller is out of the Roaring Fork wellhouse starting tomorrow.
Oh, cool.
I, I just told you last week, I didn't know whether.
Glad you.
Last Thursday, you're like, oh, by the way, he's going to be here today. That was one that was like.
Might be in Saratoga, Wyoming. We don't know.
Making progress.
Great.
Yeah.
Cool. All right.
Great.
Anything else before we adjourn? Good, bad?
Ugly.
No, I hope to bring you good hydro news soon too, but it's too early to tell you.
Okay. Just a teaser there.
Just a little teaser, just to give you something, a little nugget to hang on for a week or two.
He's holding down the port.
Yeah.
Yep.
If you do it now, you'll get the same response.
All right, then we can adjourn.